Okay, this May 4th, 2016 meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board will come to order. We're delighted to be here at Mastway School, which looks absolutely great, so it's a pleasure to be here. Before we get started, I'd like to add an item to the school board actions. There's a resignation at the high school, Jamie Mulkey, and so the acceptance of that resignation, I'd like to put that in the board actions, if that's all right with everybody. Okay, move to public comment, and this is probably totally unnecessary given this meeting, but there has been some difficulty in catching names, and so what we'd like to do for the, you know, note takers, although it's probably not necessary today, we still would like to start this policy, so after you speak, if you could just write your name and your place, just in case for some reason we've forgotten, okay? All right. And if you could, the other director was to print, so.
I am Dean Rubin from Lee, I think you guys know my name. Since I'm the public today, apparently, I'll say a couple of words about start time. I'm glad it's on the agenda, and I hope at your workshop that you come up with some plans. Like I've said a couple of times, there aren't really that many decent plans, and it's pretty easy to make a list. So after that, I hope we get a survey going where we find out what the community feels, because it seems pretty split. And also, I think we should definitely try to find out the before of our kids, you know, how they're sleeping now, before we make the change, so we can see if, once we made the change, it actually did anything. As far as I can tell, the most important objection that people have been coming up with is after we let our kids sleep enough and then go do a day of school, there's really not enough hours left for extracurriculars and athletics and, you know, the resume padding that's necessary for a little genie to get into Harvard. You know, this is important to a lot of people. I mean, I'm in the situation where I, my daughter is really struggling with sleep, and I would just, I'd be happy if she had a full night's of sleep and a good day at school, and I'm not as concerned as the after-school, as some people who apparently are doing fine now, and it's an important consideration for them. So I don't really have an answer, but I hope you guys come up with one, and that's all.
Thank you, Dean. Other public comment? Okay, we have the approval of the minutes from April 20th.
Make a motion to approve the April 20th regular meeting minutes.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Dan. I think there is a difficulty in retrieving names in public comment here, and I don't know if we can remedy that, or whether we just need to accept that we just didn't get them, so I don't know how people feel about that. I don't know what we can do about it.
I don't know what we can do.
Okay, from here on out, we'll have it. Okay. Are there other, Al?
It's on page eight, where the board had an in-depth conversation with a Chinese program. Al Holland suggested that the plan be developed by November 2017, it should be November 2016.
Thank you.
Okay. Other corrections? Hearing none, with that, I'm sorry.
I have a tiny one on page five, where it talks about the property on Orchard Drive. I just think for clarification in the last sentence where it says authorization to work with Sue Caswell and the district's apostrophe S attorney on the closed bid process.
Thank you.
Other corrections? Hearing none. With those corrections, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. The minutes are approved. Announcements and accommodations from the district?
Mike McCann, High School. Do I need to sign in?
No, I think.
So, just a few quick announcements. This week, we're doing AP exams at the high school, and we will have 93 students who will be taking a total of 160 AP exams in a variety of areas, 16 different areas, chemistry, computer science, Spanish, physics, calculus, studio art, biology, French, English, micro and macroeconomics and statistics. So I think our AP program has really expanded quite a bit, and the number of students taking the testing is really evidence of that.
Mike, how many again?
160 exams will be given to 93 students.
Can I just ask, are those, do the students who take those have to be taking courses at our high school, or are they taking courses through V-Lax? I mean, could they be taking V-Lax courses?
Yes, yes, they could take V-Lax courses. They don't actually have to be taking any AP course in order to take the exam, but the AP courses do prep them for the exam.
Okay.
An example of that, certainly, we do not offer the AP English, but we have a number of students who take the AP exam.
Okay, thank you.
Just one follow-up question, 93, so I would assume that their juniors mainly taking this, is that correct?
Seniors.
Seniors are taking the AP?
Yes.
Okay. So what percentage of the senior class, 93, that's a big percentage of the senior class, isn't it?
It is, yeah, there's 142, I think we're at.
So two-thirds are taking it, oh.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's a good thing, I think it's a good sign for AP and the dedication that our students have for their education, so I think it's a good sign. Also, next week, we will be doing the Science Kneecap on Monday and Tuesday for the juniors, so they'll have some testing. That is part of our state mandated testing that continues to go on. Also, next week, we are going to, during our advisory time, we are teaming up with David Smith from McGregor and Holly Malaski, our school SRO. We are going to be doing a presentation to bring awareness to the dangers and misconceptions around e-cigarettes and vapor pens, so we want to do a little awareness with the students during that advisory time. Basically, we'll be meeting with the senior class separately, the junior class separately, and then freshmen and sophomores as one group, so that we can have a, really look at three different areas, the school policies, the legal issues, but most importantly, the health risks to those things. There's a lot of information that is not available or even out there for students, for anybody really, because not a lot of research on it, and we want to make sure that students are aware of many potential risks, so it really can, it's an area of concern that we've heard about, and we wanted to help the students.
Right. Cigarettes, what on earth?
E-cigarettes and vapors?
Yeah, I mean, I think a big part of that is many, many people feel that it's a safe way to do whatever it is they do as far as cigarettes, and they're finding that it really is not safe. There's just not a lot of research on it, unfortunately, kids don't know about that.
I just have a question, because I think what you're saying is correct, there isn't much out there, and so what is being used to formulate the discussion? Is it a program that you're bringing in, or is it personal opinion of these individuals? You know, how that is going to be presented to the students?
Sure. Like I said, there'll be three approaches to it. The school will be just, what is our policy on that, so that students understand that it's not something that is allowed, it's treated the same as tobacco, or in some cases, as a drug offense. Also, Officer Malaski will share issues around the law, in terms of how the law treats that. But David Smith from McGregor will share just information about the health risks and some of the things that he has seen as an EMT and that he has learned about. He's also, I mean, he is a, he's an EMT, but he's moving on to medical school, so he's, you know, he's in the field and has had some experiences around it, so he's going to share some of that information, just so that students are aware of some of the potential risks. And we'll share some research that we have, that is available, that we can share. So it's not like a specific program, this is more about awareness and concern based on some experiences that we've had, and we just have, and concerns from parents primarily. We've heard a lot from parents with real concerns about this.
Thank you.
All right, and finally, my last announcement. In two weeks, on May 19th, junior class will be hosting their prom at the Red Barn in South Berwick again this year, so it's a great venue, the kids love it there, it's a really nice place, so I just wanted to share that with you. I think that's it.
Thank you. Other district?
Good evening, Carrie Veish from Mastway, glad you're all here tonight. Just two real quick things. One is I'd just like to congratulate our kindergarten, our first graders and our second graders. Last night, they performed their concert under the leadership of Pam Felber, who has more energy than I think I will ever have. She was great, but they were wonderful up on stage, and I hope with parents, and we had, we had a full house, so it was great seeing everyone out, enjoying the kindergarteners, first graders and second graders. And then secondly, we hope you can all join us here Friday evening at Mastway in the back. We'll be having our annual PTO May Fair. We have a lot of great things planned, some things you've seen in the past, but a lot of things that are new this year, so come on down, 4:30 to 7 o'clock, we'll have carnival-type games, activities, we've tied in a lot of community folks to help out with that, food, raffles, anything else I'm forgetting? I think that's about it. It's going to be a great time, so we're all looking forward to it, so come on down on Friday. Thanks.
Carrie, you should share about your freshman robotics competition.
Well, I was going to wait until both events were done, Dr. Morris. But, okay, so also last night, I thank Dr. Morris and Todd Allen also for serving as a couple, and Susan Leifert, our technology paraprofessional, for serving as our judges for half. We have two sections of our robotics club, because when it started, it became so large, we didn't have enough, we really need to do it in small groups, so they had to start two different groups. It's been run all by parents and by Suzanne Tomaszewski in the library, it has been amazing. Last night, we all got to see some of the, I'll save some of the folks, our parents had videos of it, some of the things they created, they had a variety of, three different options to choose from of a challenge, and then they needed to use the robotics kits in order to come up with the design, plan it out, make it work, and then show how the programming portion of it happened. So it was phenomenal, I'm really proud of the kids that all took part, so I'll be advertising all of the participants' names and, of course, our winners.
Carrie, it was amazing, the kids did such a super job, these are our primary age gates, they were just magnificent in their presentations. Do you suppose that the two winning, there's going to be another winner on the 24th, right? Would it be neat for them to be able to show the board?
That'd be great, yeah.
Oh, that'd be cool.
Yeah. One of our parents, Ahish Pont, was, is the really brainchild behind it, he's been fabulous. He brought it to my attention that he had been working on this with his own daughter, and said, "Do you think we could start a club here?" And it really is amazing, I, you know, keep trying to say to him, "Well, no, you can work with us a little bit more and kind of play more," and so, he's been great, so.
So ask if they're willing to do it in the first meeting, do you?
Sure.
The presentations are really quick, but you'll be inspired, they were really amazing.
Yeah, they're great, so, thank you.
Okay.
I'm here as Jay Rashard tonight. Jay, actually, one of the announcements Jay wanted me to share is that he is up at Plymouth State College tonight with students from Linderreef and Susie Renner's class that are winners of the Scholastic Writing Awards. Eighteen students who are up there receiving awards tonight, and Jay's there at a celebratory dinner and so forth, so we have eighteen very talented writers that are being recognized tonight. So that was one announcement he wanted me to make. And the other one is Thursday, May 12th, is the Fourth Annual Service Palooza at Oyster River Middle School. For those who aren't familiar with that, it's a community service day, the entire school is engaged in community service all over the place, taking on a variety of projects in the community, at the schools, and so forth, it's just a wonderful day. Just the logistics and the undertaking of getting all these kids to all these projects with all the tools they need, and all of them wearing their Service Palooza T-shirts is amazing. So if you get a chance to check it out, swing by and see, because kids will be all over the community, so wherever you are, you'll probably see some middle school kids that day, so, thanks.
Great. Other district comments? Board announcements and accommodations? Kenny?
I just wanted to make sure the community was aware, at our last meeting, we talked about the middle school and the summer program there, the summer REACH program, and that kind of works with Durham Parks and Rec. But I just really wanted to make sure that the community knows it's not limited to Durham children, so that after the school part, there's the lunch at school after the school activities, where Durham Parks and Rec takes over, that's open to Lee, Madbury and Durham. Makes no difference where you're from, transportation is the same, there's no different cost, there's nothing at all, so I just wanted that to be out there.
Great. I'd just like to mention that Mike Anderson, who's a parent in the district and also has done a fair amount of consulting in the middle school, just had a book published by ASCD on choice in public schools, it was picked as the, one of the books that would go out to members, so the first offering of it was something like 50,000 copies, so it's a real step for him, and I think real talent, and just great that he's been able to do that, so I want to mention him. Others? Sarah?
Just too quick, I do want to give a plug out for the REACH program, summer courses, my kids have taken advantage of them, and they're a great deal financially, but also they're just a perfect amount of day, you know, for my kids, I know, they get here, they do something in the morning, and then they just come home and can be in summer mode, so those are great, take a look at them. And also, I want to thank, I'm sure all staffs at all the schools do this, but I was privy to seeing it with the Mastway staff at the concert this week, just the number of staff members that were not involved with the music department coming out and being present at the event, whether it be classroom teachers, or special ed staff, or paraeducators, or the PE teacher, there was a really impressive showing of staff support there, and that's very much appreciated, thank you.
And you're absolutely right, Sarah, it happens in all the schools.
Well, there. Announcements and accommodations? Okay, moving to the Assistant Superintendent's report, where I think Todd will be Todd.
Yes. I haven't confused you with my other identity, have I?
No, we got it all straight.
Actually, before, it is, I did, I thank you, by the way, for reminding people of the REACH program, because it is, one thing I did want to mention about that is that really the registration takes place through Memorial Day, and then on Memorial Day, that's when we really will take a look at the registrations and determine how many of the programs we can run, so if you're still thinking about it, just please be aware that we do have to make sure that we have enough people in each program to be able to make it run, and we've got about three weeks of registration to go, so please take advantage of that and get your children signed up. Registration has been very strong so far, but just to put that plug out there, so thank you for mentioning that. So I was asked to come in and talk a little bit about standardized assessment in the district, and it's a topic that we've been asked, that I've been asked a number of times by the board to come in and talk about. Before I get into the specifics of standardized assessment, I didn't want to just broaden up to the topic of assessment as a general concept. I mean, clearly, assessment is an essential part of the learning process. If you go into classrooms throughout the district, probably throughout New Hampshire, throughout the country, you'll see teachers continuously engaged in a process with their students of collecting information, trying to understand where their students are at on a concept, refining the lesson based on the information that they collect, and they then, obviously, with the intent of trying to make sure that their students grasping, can master whatever it is that they're teaching. Standardized assessment tends to come with it, certainly in this community, and I think across the country, a little more of a controversial concept. I don't think people generally have a great deal of concern around the idea of assessment, but when you start talking about standardized assessments, it brings with it some images of external forces at work, and the influences that they might have on what is going on in our classroom. And so I want to focus on today is the types of standardized assessments we're using, and more specifically, how much time we're devoting to those, the impact they are having, and then ultimately, kind of how we're using the information we're collecting, and then hopefully answer your questions, because as you're probably all aware, you heard Mike talking about different testing going on here, spring is standardized assessment season. It is a time when, I mean, smarter balanced testing certainly is going on. It's, in fact, today, for those of you who are not connected to the school, today Mastway, Moheramit, and the middle school were all simultaneously engaged in a smarter balanced assessment. And actually, I would like to use this as an opportunity to put a shout-out to Josh Olsted and the IT staff for being able to manage that level of assessment. A couple of years ago, you may recall, there's an awful lot of focus on IT to make sure that we had the technology in place to be able to manage this, and clearly, it went off without a glitch today, so it was very impressive to imagine that you have that many kids engaged in it all at the same time, and it was going very well. So anyway, standardized assessment is something that causes people to certainly raise questions about what we're doing. So I do want to take a minute to just talk about why do we do these standardized assessments? Really, there are three broad concepts that standardized assessment is about. Number one, it's getting some objective data on our students and their performance. So it's objective because it's based upon commonly agreed upon standards and outcomes that are generally agreed upon across a subject discipline across the country. When we talk about smarter balance, we're talking about common core standards that are commonly agreed upon, things that we would like to have our students be able to do at a given grade level or an age level. So objectivity is one concept that they're about. Second notion is our ability to compare our results. The ability to compare our results to ourselves, the ability to compare our results to, across the state, across the country, and this is, you know, we're in a global economy, and be able to compare how our students are doing on a much broader scale. And, you know, gone are the days when you could say, "Well, we're doing well in the town of Durham, we don't have to care whether our kids can compete and do well in California or against students from Europe or Asia." So clearly, it does matter. And actually, I know, I always joke about the, when I was principal of the high school, I joke about the rankings and how much I don't care about them, and I only report to you the ones that we do well on. Well, the fact is, the reason we do well on those is because they're using standardized data to tell you that our kids are doing pretty well on these measures, and it allows us to be able to know where do we stand against the greater, the greater country or educational community, so comparability is a key. And then really, when you get down to what are policymakers and lawmakers talking about, it's accountability. And accountability often scares people, because they often associate accountability with maybe a negative consequence attached to it, but accountability can also be accountability to our students, accountability to our community, just making sure that we're giving our kids the best opportunity to be successful at each level as they kind of work their way through. So those are sort of the broad reasons that you might argue that standardized assessment exists. Now, what did I do to Alexander? Hold on. There. So the first one is, I started to talk about is smarter balanced. Now, there are certain assessments that we're mandated by law to do. Smarter Balance is one of those assessments. It is required of us by the state of New Hampshire, via the federal government, you know, all part of No Child Left Behind, and then as soon as that goes out the window, ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act. So it's accountability from the state and federal level. So we're required to conduct standardized testing. I will tell you, one of the things that has come up around smarter balance, because it is a controversial test to some degree, is there have been a handful of families that have opted or chosen to not have their children participate in smarter balanced testing. At the elementary level, we've had three students or families opt to not have their children tested. At the middle school, it's higher, there are 19 students across the entire middle school that are not testing. At the high school, where we this year switched to the SAT, we had 98% participation, and the two students that didn't participate, it wasn't about opting out, it was just there were other issues involved there, but smart.
The comparable to that would be what we had last year?
Oh, yes, the comparable to the SAT, we had 60% participation at the high school last year. So clearly, smarter balance comes with it, some concerns people have. But, so anyway, we're in the process of implementing smarter balance. What is it? Smarter Balance is aligned to Common Core standards, English, Language Arts, and Math. Every student grades three through eight is required to engage in it. The DOE does establish the, what, they don't set an exact date, they set a window, and basically, the test window is March to June. Obviously, though, if the goal is to have your students do as well as they can on the test, the natural tendency is to wait until the last part of the window, because that's about 12 weeks, so the later in the window you go, obviously, the more content students have covered, and certainly, in particular in math, I think teachers generally believe that the extra time is better. So May tends to be a fairly test-heavy month when it comes to smarter balance. The total amount of time our students spend on smarter balance is about between eight and 10 hours. One of the things to understand about smarter balance is it's, it was the first of a test that really is about being an adaptive test, and also about not being so rigid in terms of time limits. So in the old days, when you might have taken a standardized test, you might remember the phrase, "Time's up, put your pencils down," and there was a set amount of time that every student had, with smarter balance, that is not the case, it's more of a flexible window, so it's often harder to say, "This is exactly how much time it's going to take." So you need to have a sort of a flexible structure to adapt to it. Eight to 10 hours is approximately, I would say 90% of the kids, that's about how long it takes them. Some take less than that, and a small number take more than that. Typically, the test is broken into four to six pieces. There's what they call the Computer Adaptive Test, or the CAT. Basically, that's a test that a student takes, and the test itself adapts to the student based on the answers that they give. It's a computerized test, so using an example like of a math test, if a student is taking the math test and say they have a question about a fraction, and they get the question wrong, the test doesn't just move on, it asks a few more questions about fractions to make sure that, in fact, was that an aberration, or is this, that this student doesn't understand the concept? So the test actually adapts to the student, so that's one part of the test. That tends to be an hour and a half to two-hour test, depending on, again, on the student. And then there's also a thing called the Performance Task, and the Performance Task is generally a test that there's a teaching activity done with the instructor prior to it. It could be, I think, one of the ones that the elementary school is doing, it's a, it's dealing with landforms, and so the teacher does a 30-minute lesson with third graders on landforms to make sure they understand the concepts of landforms, and then, once they've done the lesson, they then are given a Performance Task that the test is based upon, and so they use the information that they took from the activity to put it into the test. The idea there is, the test is more measuring your ability to use various skills than it is to see how much content can you remember and that sort of thing. So that's the basic gist of the test. So eight to 10 hours is the timeframe for smarter balance. Another required test is the Science Kneecap. Our students, this is again, state-required, it's required at fourth, eighth, and 11th The test is one and a half to two and a half hours, generally two sessions, a total of two, so it's, I know at the high school, which is the one I was more familiar with, over two days, they have about an hour, two consecutive days set aside for the kneecap. One of the things that makes the Science Kneecap a little unusual, and hopefully, the state is assessing kind of their thoughts on the Science Kneecap, is that it's based upon, what I would say, older or less up-to-date standards, it's based on the New Hampshire framework, science frameworks that were developed about 10 years ago, and for the most part, most of our curricula across the region and across the country has been moving into using next-gen science standards to adapt. So it's an assessment that is mandated by the state, but it doesn't align entirely with what Oyster River or many other schools in the region are using. That being said, it is a required test. One of the things, just to give you a thought, there is some discussion at the state level about, particularly at the high school level, since they've moved to the SAT instead of smarter balance, there is an ability using the SAT to do what's called a science aptitude analysis out of the test. analysis out of the test. And one of the things that the state is looking at is gee, if we're already kind of moving towards this, the SAT, why don't we kill two birds with one stone and do the analysis out of that? And that could replace the science kneecap at least at the high school level. Probably though, at once, one way or another, the state is going to at some point adopt a different science assessment, but right now, science kneecap is the one we have to go with.
Quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do you know how many students are choosing to opt out?
Generally, what has happened, at least this year, most of the families that have opted to opt out are opting out of all standardized testing because I think they tend to lump everything together as like there, there's a, there's a concern about standardized test, testing as a concept. So I would, uh, I'd have to go back and look at that exactly, but um I've seen most of the letters from families um choosing not to participate and it's, in the typically, it's saying, "We're, we are not going to have our child do kneecap, smarter balance or any other standardized testing." Now, as I mentioned before, um SAT was replaced, the smarter balance at the high school this year. It is, it is a state mandated test. It is one however, that I think is much better received in this community than smarter balance, to be very honest. I think people, because we're a college, a college town, we have a lot of students with college aspirations, the vast majority of our kids took the SAT on their own anyway. I think there's a, a real strong buy-in to it and as I said before, 98% of the junior class took the SAT um on March 2nd, clearly indicating there, there, there's not a substantial uh concern about the SAT. Um so anyway, this year, we as a school also adopted the PSAT along with the SAT. So now we have all of our sophomores take the PSAT 10. I want to distinguish that from the PSAT NMSQT, they're, they're two different tests. The PSAT 10 is one that's, it's a, it's a, it's a similar test geared towards um sophomores. The PSAT NMSQT is the one that is used towards National Merit Scholar and that's done by, in the fall of junior year. So there will still be kids who will choose to take the PSAT NMSQT in the fall of their junior year in order to participate in National Merit Scholar um standing. Okay?
Could I just ask you a question?
Sure.
So the state mandates the SAT in 11th grade, right?
Correct.
And nothing else in high school?
Correct.
Except for the, 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 the science, the science that they still have to do?
And, and science kneecap.
So it, it is the choice of this district to also require the PSAT in 10th grade?
That is correct. That is a, that is an Oyster River school, school district choice, yes.
And we are paying for both of those tests, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Could I just ask you, how much does it cost per pupil to pay for each of the, uh, particularly the 10th grade test because the 11th grade test?
11th grade, the, the SAT is partly funded through the state. The only part of the SAT we're paying for is that we, we have our students take the essay portion and I think it's about a, I wish Heather was here, $11 a kid to do the, the essay portion. The PSAT is about $15 a student, it's, it's much cheaper. So we spent um around $3,000 on the PSAT 10 for our sophomores. So the other thing to, to be aware of, because I, um, one of the, the other, I guess you could say controversial issues related to standardized testing is also discussion about Common Core and, and Common Core standards. There were people who objected to the smarter balance for its alignment with Common Core. I think it's important to keep in mind that the SAT is also aligned with Common Core. In fact, it, it's, it's um the newer version of the SAT which will be coming down the road in a couple of years. They're moving towards a computer adaptive test as well. If any of you have done any graduate school testing or anything like GREs, they're all done online now and eventually the SAT is going to be a similar test to that. But it, it is aligned with the Common Core the same way smarter balance was. It is a much shorter test however. So I think that's certainly um a, a value there. So um as I mentioned before, all of our 11th graders also took the essay portion of the, of the SAT. Reason we chose to do that was because it's something that many colleges look for and we thought it would be um in our students' best interest to have that opportunity to do it. Um and again, 10th graders took the PSAT 10, uh 11th graders took the, the SAT. We did, the schedule for uh SATs, we, we basically blocked out um one school day, March 2nd became SAT, PSAT day and we ran a modified schedule. And basically what happened is freshmen and seniors did not have school that day so that all sophomores and juniors could be engaged in testing because the, the issue with implementing PSATs and SATs to that many kids, there's a lot of proctors that are needed to be able to do that. So basically, all of our teachers had to be proctors, so we, it wasn't feasible to, to run um all of our classes. Total amount of test time, again, four hours is the average. For some students however, accommodations can be made on it and they could have as much as double that time. So there were kids that took as much as eight hours on the test. But again, that's, that's their choice. All students were, four hours was the minimum that students spent, spent on the test. Again, participation, it was extremely high. Feedback we received from families and so forth was extremely positive and I think um probably the biggest thing is that people saw real solid value in it and so I think the students took it extremely seriously and, and from, from all indications, it was a very good experience at the high school. Ken?
Was this the first year that the 10th graders did the PSAT?
The first time, first time we did it with all of our, our 10th graders. Typically, a, a lot of students took the, take the PSAT in the, in the spring of their sophomore year as sort of a precursor to then doing the PSAT NMSQT in the fall. It's sort of like a practice for the practice test. It's, it's a pretty typical pattern. So this is the first time we universally said, okay, all sophomores are going to do the PSAT 10.
And why didn't we do that?
So-
The, the SAT gives the students, the teachers and families an indication of how they would perform on the SAT as juniors. So it gives uh families and teachers a way of evaluating where they are in relation to um projected uh scores on the SAT. So basically, a practice test for the SAT gives you an indicator as to how one might perform on the SAT. So historically, the districts had about 87% of the kids take the SAT and I don't know what the percentage is in the PSAT, but clearly by it becoming the standard, you know, we have 98% of the kids taking SAT, I would say, you know, we probably jumped up the percentage of PSAT too. Same with the writing prompt, the writing prompt is required, but we felt it was an important component of the assessment that would benefit the students as they made application to um colleges. So the PSAT and the writing prompt were both choices we made as a district.
And actually Catherine just reminded me as well, um we replaced, we, we, we were doing the STAR assessment with sophomores and we just, we determined to not do that anymore with sophomores with the idea that we'd replace it with the PSAT 10 because we felt it was more in line with their thinking and their preparation for, for the upcoming college application process and all that kind of thing.
And so the staff, I'm trying to remember the, I mean, I remember the PSATs and the SATs a long time ago, but, and they seemed completely unconnected to what I was learning in high school. So I guess Mike, I see how the STARS work, I guess I, I'd love to know what, does the staff feel and do the students feel that they afford, that's what we're using for our assessment, how kids are doing in our schools and how teachers are doing? Are they much more connected now?
They're, they're invested in the PSAT and the SAT versus the students who are doing the STAR, it really wasn't connected to what they were doing, it didn't count for anything. So the investment from students wasn't as productive as we're seeing with the PSAT.
But the content?
The, the, and I think the content is giving us a better picture too of, of, again, this is now aligned to um Common Core state standards. The STAR was a blood pressure check if you remember, so it really was just that quick check. So we still have availability for 10th grade students that receive response to intervention for us to do that blood pressure check to make sure they're making progress with the intervention we're providing. But what we're looking for is more global progress for students and we knew the investment would be higher when we switched to something that meant something to them. So we see more true progress.
Sarah, I would also add that as we've moved towards the SAT over the last two years, the teaching staff was completely supportive of that move. When I went to the state and uh worked with other school districts to see the SAT replace the smarter balance, our staff was 100% behind me.
I, I also have a point to add on that. I have experience with the STAR testing and also with the PSAT and SAT and I found in my experience and generally with other students that the STAR assessment was not nearly taken as seriously and it felt, um after taking it year upon year, it felt redundant and it didn't seem to have the same effect that taking a PSAT, okay, and getting ready for my SAT was just going to get me into college. People weren't driven for the PSAT versus the STAR assessment because it's, oh, I gotta take another stupid test that doesn't have any implication on me.
Yeah. Yeah, one of the things Troy reminds me of too is that given the nature of our students, what we, what we have found is a, a larger and larger percentage of our students by ninth grade have maxed out the STAR in terms of how far up they can go on it. And so many kids get, it's repeated, they feel like it's a-
For years, the same thing over and over for years.
Yeah. So this is a little more authentic too, it's, it's, it's more challenging and probably more, more respected by the kids, yeah. Any other thoughts on, okay. Um so anyway, STAR obviously was the, is a locally administered thing. We, we choose as a district to do this. Uh we, uh it is a, STAR assessment is another assessment that is aligned with Common Core standards. As Catherine explained, it's, it's sort of like a, a blood pressure check or Cindy Douglas, the middle school, said it's kind of like the dipstick, you know, and to check any oil and like, it's not a comprehensive assessment, but it's a quick read on where does my, where does a particular child stand? And because it can be done in short 20 to 30-minute blocks, you can track progress over time. And certainly starting in second grade, doing it three times a year. And actually, um one of the things that I see a lot of at the middle and high school level because there's enough data there is the various um RTI teams and student support teams really actively look at it and they can kind of look for a trend or a pattern, which, when you get that kind of data, particularly when you're looking at reading or, or math skills, it's, it's, it's more valuable. It's not an isolated, did this kid take this test seriously or not kind of a thing. So anyways, it's just aligned with Common Core. Every student grades two through nine do it three times a year. 10th graders, we're using it for progress monitoring. So basically, any student that's identified as being one that requires a little more close tracking, we can, we implement it with them just to kind of keep an eye on them and to make sure that they're making progress. Really, the, the idea is to use it as sort of a, kind of a, a, a quick screen so we know kind of where our students stand and we can, we can, we can track their performance. Just as a kind of a sidebar, you know, at the, at the middle school, a lot of the summer math work that is, that goes on where we're helping the kids to accelerate and so forth, a lot of that comes from drilling down and looking at the data that we get from STAR Math and then using that to determine, okay, what kids are ready for what challenges and so forth. So that data is very meaningful too, like John MacArthur and Ruth Galing as they sort of begin to get a picture of which of the kids that we really want to reach out to and make sure that they're connecting with, with enrichment like that. And then ultimately, just in terms of a total over the course of the year, like I said, 20 to 30 minutes per assessment, they do each one math and, and reading three times. So it's two to three hours total time for the entire year that a student would spend on it. But I, I would, I would argue that it is generally very valuable information um from a, from the, the teaching side of the equation in terms of knowing where students stand.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Maybe this is common as much, that, that my sense of the STAR assessment is there's hardly any reading on it really, any connected reading, there's no writing on it. So that, so that um when you say that it's aligned to the Common Core, and the Common Core is about in-depth reading and probing reading and, and so I have, I, I would, I would grant that maybe the STAR assessment correlates to, to what you do on the, in the Common Core, but that it's aligned to the Common Core, I have difficulty believing that it really is because it seems to me that the, this skill, it seems to, from what I've seen, it's like a lot of vocabulary essentially.
Yeah, yeah.
And vocabulary of course is correlated to reading and writing, you know? So you can give a vocabulary test and probably get something similar to what you get if you gave a reading test, but it's really not, it's not the same thing.
Agreed. It, it absolutely is, it is, it is a, it's a very quick reference that, that hopefully a lot of other uh information will be gathered in other more personalized ways. And that's why I think, as I started at the beginning, I, I do think our teachers do an awful lot of other assessing.
Okay.
So it's, so it's not, I, we absolutely don't want to just take a STAR score and say, this tells us what we need to know about a student. That being said, as a quick screen, is this student struggling or not? Do we need to target them for some extra support? It does provide that. You, you, you're probably right, the term aligned, maybe that's not the best word, that's more the, the-
I'm sure that's what they claim it is.
That's the Renaissance, the Renaissance.
Yeah, Renaissance claims that, yeah.
They use the term aligned. Correlates is probably a better word. We, we certainly, um success on the STAR would probably indicate s- um an ability that might result in success in other tasks outside of the STAR. But it, it by itself, it's, it's just a quick, where does a student stand at a given point in time? And it really, the value of it is, in my mind, is being able to look at it over time. So it's not just a one-time thing because as Troy points out, on any given day, a kid might just not care. And they just click, 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 click and see if that's all you have, you're not going to get the, a value of data. However, doing it three times a year for, for six or seven years, there is a, you can see a pattern and, and hopefully people aren't slipping through the cracks. Because that's really what we're trying to do is not have kids slipping through the cracks. Um, okay, so next one I wanted to mention, which is, I'm actually quite excited about this. For years, Mastway has used the Fanta-Simpinell Benchmark Reading Assessment. And it really doesn't, I, I, I don't think it's probably accurate to put this Fanta-Simpinell in the same category as STAR and smarter balance, but it is a standardized uh system that we are using to track our students' reading proficiency. For years, Mastway has done, but done Fanta-Simpinell Benchmark and this year, the Mohermit School has uh decided to adopt it so that we will have a common um, a reading assessment done across both buildings. Up until this year, Mohermit was doing the DRA, which is, which is also a very good assessment, but it allows us to have a little more commonality across the district and it gives us comparable information that certainly as students leave, the elementary schools to go to the middle school, the data is comparable and it's easier for us to, to generalize from. But, but um Benchmark is done starting with middle of the year and kindergarten. It's, it's not a, it's not a test per se, it's more of a, an observational technique that is used. So a student might take a, a text that is um considered to be age-appropriate, they would read that orally to the, to the teacher, the teacher would kind of track results and kind of get a sense of where the student is at. And the idea is you're looking for fluency, you're looking for a variety of, of reading-related skills. And then the teacher, using their own subjective judgment, makes a determination kind of where that student falls. Typically, they do that three times a year from case, from starting middle of this, middle of kindergarten through fourth grade. Depending on the student, it might take anywhere from 15 to 45 minutes. Older kids, when they become a little more proficient, they might, you know, sit down with their teacher, read for a couple of minutes, the teacher says, well, why don't you go off and read that passage and come back and we'll talk about what the reading was? And then basically, it's more a conversation about what they read and, and what they understood from what they read. But the idea is, it's a consistent method of collecting data to be able to track reading progression and reading proficiency, very valuable tool. Yes?
How does this, how does it work though? If each, each student is taking, you know, it can take anywhere from 15 to 45 minutes and the teachers individually meeting with each child, how does that work?
Actually, you know, Carrie, you want to come down and talk about how that's managed?
Sure. Having used the Benchmark Assessment for many years in a various grade levels that I taught, basically, teachers do it different ways. They, some teachers invite students in before school even starts at Mastway. It's not something we mandate, but it's what they choose to do. Other teachers will have kids come up one at a time or in a, and have kids other, the rest of the class working and engaged in other activities. And like Todd articulated, you know, um as an example for a first grade student, they may come up with a, you know, a few different choices of books, the teacher would call them up, ask them to kind of choose which book they'd like to read. You can kind of see they go and they choose which book is most of the time appropriate for them. And the teacher may give them some information, you know, this is a book about a boy, his name is Johnny and he's going to find an animal that he's going to play with at his house, let's see what happens. So you give them a little background information so then this, you can take a look at the student and their fluency in reading, you can see um vocabulary development, you can see if they know what could come before, what could happen after, maybe make predictions and that sort of thing. So all the time, when the student is doing reading, teachers, the standardized part of it, if you will, is that there are form, formats that teachers use and basically the text is also on a sheet. So the teacher is taking what we call running records while the child is reading. So what a running record is, is basically like shorthand to say whether the student paused, whether the, the student needed um some, appealed for help, whether- paused, whether the student needed some, appealed for help, whether the student missed the word, whether they used the wrong word, that sort of thing. So whether they read what a period was and they took a stop and took a breath, or if they just kind of went on through that. So it's a really great measure. The range sounds large when Todd says 15 to 45 minutes. Really, it's, for me, my experience was, you know, 15, 20 minutes with the child, discussing a story. And then, like Todd, you articulated very well, the upper grades, it may in all take 45 minutes, but, you know, a teacher may start with one student, get them started in the story, okay, go finish that, and when you're done, we'll have a discussion about it, and then start another child and go through that same process, so it's kind of rotation, so, yeah, it's great.
Thank you, Carrie. So, that's Fanta-Simpanel Benchmark. And that information at the end of fourth grade is then transferred to the middle schools, the middle school teachers then have that information as a way to kind of start that transitional process and familiarize them with the students that are coming in, so it's really valuable information. So anyway, kind of bring it to a close here, what does Oyster River do with standardized test data? As I mentioned before, our RTI and student support teams across the district use the data to really try to improve instruction for individual students, but also at the classroom level. An example might be if you discover through, you know, let's say you're doing the STAR Math Assessment and you discover that kids are having an issue with a particular type of algebra problem, and you recognize that it's happening at a particular grade level, you can use that to say, hey, you need to kind of focus on this a little more at the grade level now, rather than waiting until the end when you do the summit and say, well, these kids didn't know how to do this. So it allows that sort of instructional adjustment to take place along the way. And it also allows you to key in on particular students that might be struggling and hopefully provide them the kind of supports they need to be successful. As I mentioned, we try to target students for support. There are various tutors about the district that are available to work with students for various math and reading-related issues, so that the data collected allows us to target the tutors and make sure they are able to single out the kids that need that extra support to be successful. The other thing which I would show it to you on the computer, except it would violate an individual student's privacy, but every teacher has access to Power School with all of their students on it. And there is a link on Power School that all teachers have called the Analytics tab. And I got to thank Sue Johnson for all the work she does to make sure all this information is there. But if you can imagine, a teacher can go in at any time and click on the Analytics tab and see the history of their student on all of the standardized assessments that have been done over their entire time in the school district, and actually outside the school district, because some of the data is state-reported and it is in our database. But teachers can look at that, and that information does, you know, if a student is struggling in your class, you go back and take a look at how they've performed, it is very informative and it might cause you to say, gee, okay, let me go back and take a closer look at this student on this particular skill or area. So it can be a very informative thing. Smarter Balanced, keep in mind, this is only the second year of Smarter Balanced, and really, one of the things that we, it takes about three years of any standardized test before the data is normalized and you can use it in a very meaningful way to analyze curriculum or trends. Eventually, once we've had three years' worth of Smarter Balanced data, it will become something that we can take a look at more closely and use it to begin a review of our curriculum areas and determine either areas that our students are struggling in. At this point, the Smarter Balanced data is much more individual student diagnostic, this is where you individually stand, but the data at this point is not really at a point where we can say, yeah, we can compare it and we can look for trends. After next year, we will be able to do that, and we will be able to take a look at individual items on the test and ask ourselves, you know, if our students are struggling with, you know, vocabulary skills or algebra or fractions, we'll be able to look at those standards individually and look at the items on that and actually be able to do a little more detailed analysis. When that, once we get there, we'll be able to do that with it as well. So I would be happy to take any questions that you haven't already asked.
I just have, this is maybe a concern. I hadn't realized that we were requiring 10th graders to take the PSAT. And I'm just wondering about the logic of that, because if the purpose of it is to prepare them to take the SAT, which we are required, you know? There's all kinds of ways in which students can prep for the SAT, you know, you can take a course, you can, there's books galore. What is the logic of requiring for everybody a test, its only purpose is to prepare them for another test?
Well, I think we took a look at the fact that we have a high percentage of kids that were invested in taking it to begin with, you know, the 85% or so were already taking it. And the way that the SAT, PSAT, is being designed, as they kind of rework it to align with Common Core standards, they're really looking at, the data will correlate, so what we will be able to do is take a look at how a student does on the PSAT as a 10th grader and be able to use that information potentially to refine what they do as a junior, to help prepare them to do better on the SAT, or, and not just the test, but to learn the skills that will allow them to be better on the test. So the two do work together for us as a school to be able to look at an individual student's performance. It isn't, the tests are not isolated experiences. You're right, it is designed as a practice for the SAT, but I think we wanted to have some form of an assessment at sophomore level that, number one, would be meaningful to kids, because the PSAT is very meaningful to them, and would also be meaningful to our teachers to be able to give us a data point to say, how are our students doing in these areas? Is it a perfect assessment for everything we need to know? No, but I think it is one, when we were looking for data points or assessments that our people, both teachers and students, were invested in and we felt would be meaningful information for us to look at, PSAT, SAT was very quickly agreed by just about anybody we worked with, that this was, this would be a valuable thing to do. And on a practical level, in order to do the SAT, which is a state-mandated, now it's mandated and it had, because it was being done as a state-mandated test, it had to happen on March 2nd. As a matter of practicality, it was actually a very convenient time to say, well, gee, if we're going to do the SATs with the juniors, it would be very easy to organize things to do the PSAT 10 with the sophomores. So it was a fairly simple thing to adapt to, to make it happen.
I think the other part of it, Tom, is that in both cases, we had such a high percentage of students taking them already, that it seems sensible to organize it around a universal rather than by happenstance.
Well, I think there's a difference, so if parents choose to have their kids take the PSAT, I mean, fine, but as a district to require the PSAT of all students, and it may be that this provides diagnostic information that comes back and feeds into instruction, but time-wise, I think it would be pretty, you know, whether that really happens, you know? I think probably its main purpose is to get kids oriented towards taking that test.
Yeah, I think it absolutely is, the primary purpose is designed to get kids, you know, prepared for a high-stakes test such as the SAT, their junior year, but I still think there's valuable information that can be drawn from it, and it will tell us where our students stand at that point in time on two very important academic areas. Okay. Carrie?
Oh, yeah. I just had a point on that. Personally, I've taken, you know, two PSATs, an ACT and an SAT, and I think that in regards to preparing for such a high-stakes test, I think the, I've also taken a class, and I think the best way to prepare, you mentioned, there are other ways to prepare for the test, but there's no real substitute for, you know, sitting down and taking a test and building that, the stamina and the getting the feel for what it is. And I think that providing the students with an outlet to take the test, because I, before this was a thing, in my sophomore year, I elected to take it, and I think that it is great that we have a place for students to practice.
Okay. Carrie?
I'm going to try to think this through, so I'm sorry if I'm not so clear here. But, and I appreciate what you said, Troy, and I appreciate what you said, but part of me is feeling what we're doing is we're getting kids better, able to do better on tests. And if the tests are a real reflection of learning, that's great. But, and the opening statement that you gave, standardized assessments are designed to be objective, measures of student performance. And so the underlying thing that I ask, and I don't know the answer, is does that assessment truly measure the learning that we really want to value? Because you could have a test and, and I think back through, I mean, how many tests have I taken to my career? And so many times, I learned for a test and I really distinguish the learning from the test from true learning. And the learning from the test was things I put down on the test and they were gone. And the true learning I took, so I, and again, I'm thinking out loud and I'm sorry for ranting, but I think we really need to keep in mind, what is the objective? Is the objective, and I know the pressure, you know, SAT, college, this, that, but we need to keep that bigger awareness of really what I think is the crucial issue, which is learning and not testing. Does that make sense?
Well, if I, I would say that, as we discussed, the idea of doing PSAT 10 and SAT with our teachers, one of the things that was a compelling reason to do it was the belief that our teachers had, that our students' performance on these tests would be meaningful to them in terms of whether their students were learning what they need to be learning. In other words, they, our teachers saw it as being an authentic measure, and so I think they, to me, that's one of the most important things. When we, when we were doing either kneecap at the high school or Smarter Balanced after it, by the time a student reaches, you know, 10th, 11th grade, they've experienced a great deal of assessment over their lives. And by that point, they're, they've pretty well made decisions about themselves as students, and their level of investment in the standardized assessment can be very minimal. And I would argue, last year, the investment in the Smarter Balanced was extremely low. The fact that our teachers and our students really value both measures, I mean, certainly, this is the first time we've done it, so, and to be, the College Board is still wrestling with how to be able to share the data with us so that we can then use it in a meaningful way for us as educators. But I do think, starting with the education community, the students and the teachers value it as a measure, to me speaks volumes. I'd much rather, even if it's an imperfect measure, I'd much rather use something that people value and take what meaning we can from it than to implement something that people don't value and try to justify it.
I can add to that, if you don't mind. You know, if we took a vote of our teachers on what assessments they would want, invariably they'd take the DRA Benchmark, and they would definitely do the SAT. But if we asked them to vote on Smarter Balanced, it would be hard tomorrow. We do Smarter Balanced because we're required to do Smarter Balanced through federal and state law. It would not be the assessment of choice for Oyster River. When you get down to, you know, the brass tacks, it's doing an assessment of English and math, it's not doing assessment of the arts. So art, music, it's not doing assessment of our children's physical abilities through PE, it's not doing assessment of moral language. It is a whole host of things that are covered. And, you know, we get to what I perceive the belief system is in our district, standardized testing required by either Concord or Washington is not our cup of tea. So those particular assessments, I think we do because we have to. Benchmark and prior to Benchmark, DRA, the SAT, and I think our teachers, quite frankly, have, if not the same love of STAR as they do the Benchmark, DRA or SAT, they've used that data to their advantage now, because as we build intervention strategies around struggling kids, it's not just the classroom teachers' informed opinion, but they can now inform our opinion by backing it up with the data from STAR, and it's made a difference in how we approach mathematics and how we build programs for kids at risk. So, you know, if we were going to rank order what's popular, we would, at the district, get rid of Smarter Balanced tomorrow, but that's not an option we have. So we chose to use other measures that we think are valuable for us of the district to monitor student growth and reinforce staff's informed opinion on students' progress. But by no means, any of these assessments even come close to or even tend to measure the broad spectrum of student learning. And I just talked about content, but it also does, that applies to attitudes towards learning and a whole host of other measures that just simply aren't there. This is a very limited perspective, and the whole world, and Tom probably doesn't want to, the whole world is centered around ELA, but the whole world isn't centered around ELA and math. We have so many other things that we do that we measure growth as a human being, and just the way that Washington put it together, they focused in on two content areas, and that's just the reality of the situation for Oyster River.
And I get that, and I appreciate that. And I think what I was trying to articulate is that, I think what our kids are learning in the classroom has so much incredible value, I would not like to see that, that focus be lost on it to the better of an SAT score. And that's why there are SAT prep classes, and so if you want to do long SATs, but I, and I don't think our teachers will go there, but that's why I voice that.
And also add that, because we had such a high percentage of youngsters taking the SAT, by doing it as a district, we've created equity and opportunity, because absolutely you're right, you know, if a family has, you know, the financial wellbeing to do so, they can bring in tutors, they can send their child to classes, but what we are doing as a district is saying, every child has the same advantage, if you will, in terms of the PSAT. For us, it made sense because we had such a high percentage of kids doing it.
Sarah, you had some to add, probably, did you?
Yeah, I guess I, I share the concern about the 10th grade requirement as well, but, you know, I think there's been a lot of discussion about that. My other question would be about, do you get a feeling, do you have a sense that there's a redundancy in reading at the elementary level? Because there, they're doing both the STAR and the Fanta-Simpanel.
Fanta-Simpanel Benchmark.
And I know that the teachers are, get a lot of information from the Fanta-Simpanel that they really value. Does that carry up to the middle school level? Like, is there a Fanta-Simpanel up at the, it stops at?
It stopped at fourth grade, yeah. In fact, I was just talking with Cindy Douglas, who's the reading instructor at the middle school, about her thinking on it. And certainly, there would be value in having Fanta-Simpanel continue to some extent up at the, at the middle school, but the way in which the curriculum is delivered and the structure that is going on up there would make it harder to implement. And the feeling is, by that point, students that have had reading struggles have been identified and they're able to make sure those supports are being provided, so-
Let me be clear, I'm not, I'm not looking to add more, I'm looking, you know, is there a way to streamline it? So we're only doing one reading assessment from second grade through middle school, as opposed to doubling up at the elementary level with STAR and Fanta-Simpanel and then going to just, and if the answer's no, and the teachers are feeling they're getting the info-
I have not heard anything, and maybe either Carrie or Catherine might be able to jump in, I have not heard anything where people are saying that they feel there's redundancy in the STAR reading and the Benchmark. I think there's, and DRA currently at Mohermit, I think there's tremendous teacher support for both of those assessments. You want to jump in and talk about that?
Yeah, so also, the Benchmark is really more diagnostic, and so when you think about the STAR, when we were looking at a few, it's probably been five years now, at a universal screener, we were thinking about following the state plan around response to intervention and what we didn't have in place. And one thing was that universal screener. So there was a committee who looked at various screeners, and we looked at validity and reliability with all of those, and what it came out with with STAR was the best choice for our district, giving what it would provide us. So the information that it gives us is the data of where they fall within that grade level or above that grade level. It also gives us growth rates. So between fall, winter and spring, there's expected growth rate, so we're also looking at those students who are not a concern, but who have been performing very well, are they a- performing very well, are they achieving their growth rates as well? So we monitor all kids that way. It's also a progress monitoring tool, are kids making progress? So we can give that tool as often as we need to versus a benchmark. It is more lengthy and diagnostic and it takes a lot more teacher one-on-one time.
And then my last thing when I'm done is, as far as the RTI, and I understand these and especially the STAR as being good things to sort of flag kids who are struggling. I guess the one population of student that I'm concerned about is the population who scores very high on these tests, these assessments, but is struggling with sort of the more organizational and efficiency type of things. And I guess I, I look at my middle schoolers, both homeworks at this point and the level of complexity of things that they're being asked to do is at one side wonderful and exciting and on the other side horrifying and scary. And so I just think of, you know, and again, I've seen kids who can handle that very complex, very meaty assignment, and I've seen kids who score as high on every one of these assessments but can't handle the level of complexity and of the assignment. So I guess when I look at RTI, I would love us as a district, and I know Catherine and I have talked a little bit about this, to find a way to, to find those kids who are scoring incredibly high, but instead of giving them more or even more challenging reading, giving them these skills that are going to keep them from being successful as they go through middle school and high school, particularly boys.
Yeah, certainly at the middle school level, having lived there for 26 years myself, organizational strategies, you know, executive functioning, those kind of things, it is the focus of much of what the middle school is about, is try to help. That's what the team environment is about. So it's a continuous process. I don't know that there's a particular standardized assessment to really get at that as an issue, but you're absolutely right. There are kids that are, you know, intellectually scoring through the roof, but they can't translate that into the ability to string together a series of complex steps to get the outcome that needs to happen to be successful on a project or task. And certainly, that is something that comes up in RTI meetings and so forth, is to, suggestions for how we could, you know, provide graphic organizers and other things to help a student put that information into a format that they can use, because you're absolutely right. That is, it's not enough to just say, wow, this student is reading beyond their grade level. We need to have them continue to grow as a person.
Troy?
Doesn't that involve a correlation between a student's grades and the standardized assessment? Because they can't be, they're looked at as singular items. So I feel like if you do see a kid that's scoring really high, but then they're struggling in the classroom, grade-wise, I feel like that would be a way to diagnose one of those organization...
Absolutely. Oftentimes when we, when you talk about it, you ought to be in charge of our RTI team, Troy, that's exactly...
Yeah, that's good. It's higher than that, right?
You're talking about triangulation of data taken, because you don't just go with one piece of information, say, that's enough to tell me. So you're absolutely right. You look at how a student is doing in the classroom, how they're being observed, you look at standardized information that you have, you look at any other information you can pull together and to develop a profile of that student and then say, okay, based on this information, what's the best way forward for that student? And the standardized data is just one piece of it, because, you know, you mentioned it yourself, you know, at times not being that invested in the STAR, but you were and continue to be an exceptional student. So there could be a disconnect between the performance on the STAR versus your classroom performance, and that needs to be recognized, yeah.
So, you know, this whole high school assessment is pretty fresh in my mind since I've gone through it and also the whole college stuff is pretty fresh. So when I hear the concerns about the 10th grade thing about learning, the standardized testing is, you know, the other assessments that we offer are what really are the rich part of the other learning that's occurring. In my mind, we keep talking about aligning the common core, but we're trying to align our standardized testing to what our students' needs are. Since we're a high aspiration district where there's a lot of kids that are going towards the college path, it's really a wise idea in the four-year planning to put the PSAT 10th grade, then the SAT. And to the mind, why have everybody do it? Because as a sophomore in high school, there's a bunch of kids who may have absolutely no idea what they want to do, many of them. And for some kids who don't really know, well, maybe I may go to college, maybe I may not, when they take that PSAT score, and if they do really well on the PA, PSAT score, that becomes the driving force that lends them down the next path. And that's, you know, since we have such a high percentage of kids going to college, that group we're added to. So I think it's a good idea. In my mind, it's leveraging what's a mandate to match what really are our kids' aspirations. So I think it's smart. And that's my two cents.
And then Denise, and then maybe call it close, because it's been a great discussion, I think.
And mine is kind of leading a little bit, slightly off topic in that I really appreciate the presentation. It's interesting because I actually thought that this was going to be a different presentation. So next time, I'd like the other presentation, which, again, this is, this is really helpful as an update, I appreciate it. But I'm also really curious about the, and again, using the word assessment, but in terms of the report cards and the progress reports at the middle school and the new system that's being adopted there. And I know, you know, it's in process in terms of how grades are reported. And I know I would very much like to hear an update in terms of how that's gone this year, how have the teachers found it who are using the new, you know, competency-based reporting? You know, how's it gone for them? How, what's the parent response been? That kind of thing. So, you know, so that I would appreciate, you know, down at some point, you know, getting an update on all of that as well.
Yeah, the middle school committee that has been working on that all year is planning to present to you at some point before the end of this school year. And then we're running out of school year, so...
We'll schedule it, we'll schedule it in the next meeting, Joe.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Anything else?
Great presentation, I think.
Thank you.
Good discussion, thank you.
Superintendent, your part?
Well, mine's not as long as Todd's. Couple of things, just to remind the world out there that tomorrow is Cinco de Mayo, and we did take a different approach this year. The university has been working with our Durham Police Department as well as the school system. And so we've chosen really not to make any adjustment to the school day. We have chosen to limit after-school activities at the middle school, but not at the high school. We'll see how it goes. They don't, the students don't have a day off to read before Cinco de Mayo, they actually have classes tomorrow. So we're thinking that will delay whatever partying will happen. And based on the weather pattern, maybe that will delay the, or relocate where the parties will happen. But we're confident that the university worked with us and with the town of Durham this year, so we won't hold that. We won't have the type of things that we've seen in the past. I want to suggest, while I can do that, I'll do that when we get down to discussion items, to want to let the board know that the negotiating team, Tom and Al and Dan, met with me and the Guild today for the first time. I want to say that the Guild put out an overview to the board to start early, because technically they don't have to start until September, October generally. And further, they wanted to do what's called a collaborative approach to negotiation. Basically, that means each side outlines a problem they see and you talk through the problem before you come up with a negotiated language to resolve the problem. Sometimes the discussion actually could be a problem that exists that doesn't fit into the contract. And it gives the Guild and the board a chance to talk through an issue. One that came up tonight was on V-Lax. That wouldn't be a contract issue, but they wanted to be able to have a conversation about it. I have to say, the first meeting went extremely well. I thought that the Guild representatives and the board representatives were right on the mark in terms of the whole attitude towards a collaborative approach. I would ask, and Tom, Tom asked me to make sure this happened, that our next board meeting, we have a non-public meeting to talk about the financial parameters where the board wants to go. And at that point, we can also share the various issues that we're talking about. But I would say that the list of items we put forward, we probably have 10 things, give or take, and we all felt that, you know, the next meeting would take six of them and we're done with them. Because the board and the teachers both felt, well, these are just a comment to both sides. And so we identified the non-financial issues that we think we could attack at the next meeting, waiting for guidance from the board. So I just want to commend the Guild in this first meeting to say, you know, really grate me. And I'll wait for the discussion items.
Okay. Business administrator?
Good evening, Sue Caswell, business administrator. I have three items for you tonight. The first one is budget update, just my standard format to give you an idea of where we stand this year. This is as of April 28th. I can say that things are looking very good at this point, and especially compared to last year. Any questions on any of those items? So right on, right on target with the budget. The next item I have is the bond for the field. I've been working with bond counsel to come up with a bank, choose a bank for the bond or the bond bank. I did a quick little spreadsheet of the different organizations I contacted, and based on that, it looks like, actually, I could update you on TD Bank, the last conversation I had with them, they were looking at a 1.9% rate. So until we actually commit, I have a commitment letter with them, we can lock in on something. But I actually do need a motion from you to move forward with TD Bank, so if you could just approve that, or if you have any questions on any of the information on that spreadsheet.
I would just indicate that, you know, if you're getting the percentages below 2%, you're getting really terrific rates. So this, we decided to go with private bank because they were giving us a better rate than the bond bank.
Okay, so the motion is to go to TD Bank, like the number here is 2.2%.
Just to, you know, negotiate with them for the bond, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're locking into a rate. We will, we will actually require another meeting to formalize everything. You'll have to sign paperwork, kind of like when you do a mortgage, we'll have to do that, hopefully at our next board meeting or the one after that, so. But this is just to move forward.
So this is to authorize you to go ahead and negotiate with TD Bank?
Yes, correct.
I approve the motion, that we may have to negotiate with TD Bank for the bonding of our other fields.
Moved by Kenny, seconded by Denise. Other questions?
I just want to...
I'll get you on Penn.
You always cut to the heart of things. Denise?
A question, just in terms of, because Bank of New Hampshire bond bank didn't have a rate listed, so I just was curious about that.
I didn't get that far. In terms of the bond bank, you don't lock into a rate until they go out for a bond sale, which doesn't happen until the end of June. So, yeah. And when I looked at the fees that they charge, I just kind of thought that would, that wouldn't be as desirable as those that don't have fees, so.
I have one more question.
Sure.
On TD Bank, is there pay early, no penalty, is that a non-option?
Yes, there is, there is no penalty. I'm sorry, I didn't put that in there, but that's correct. They are more flexible than traditional bond bank.
Other questions? All those in favor with the motion to go ahead with TD Bank, please raise your hands. Seven in favor, the student rep.
Thank you. And the last item I have is another bid. This is for the Masway Boiler Room. We had three bids, and I had Wendy send you Jim Rosicky's recommendation with, for Comfort Systems. They're a new company to us, but he did some reference checks and found them to be very desirable by a number, actually, UNH is using them, and they really want our business. So they're the low bid, and I'd like to recommend that you accept that bid, Comfort Systems.
You have a motion, Denise?
I'd like to make a motion to use Comfort Systems for the boiler at Masway.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Al. Are there discussions or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Student Senate report?
Currently, the student senate is working on a fundraiser for Ms. Rafer, who is undergoing treatment right now. So we're working on a fundraiser for that. Mr. McCann touched on a lot of the topics that are going on right now, but AP testing is going on right now, so that's been a big part of the school day for a lot of kids. And lastly, prom's coming up, lots of kids are excited, and that's going, that's what's going on at the high school right now.
Thanks, Troy.
One comment that it just, you mentioned this Rafer, and it just reminded me, I thought that was just wonderful how you did the get well on Ms. Rafer, that on the grounds, I just wanted to mention that.
We wish her the best.
Wish her good.
Absolutely.
We need to establish a date for the workshop in May, and Jimmy, it's a possibility that you want to run by us?
Yeah, I was wondering if the board wanted to stay to Wednesdays and then pick out the last Wednesday in May, which would be the 25th. I didn't know if that was, if we do it that week, I mean, the 25th doesn't work, we can flip on each side of that. But we wanted to get the workshop on the late start and the reports out by the board and the next steps accomplished this month. And so I wonder how the 25th works.
Okay. Okay, so time, six?
Yeah, we can do seven.
Could we do the regular time seven, is that a problem?
Whatever you guys want.
If it's nine...
Okay, let's do seven.
I would not be able to attend that, but I mean, I don't know how, is, if, I have an away game that day, the 25th of May, was it? Yes. So I would not be able to attend that workshop, but I mean, if it works for the rest of the board, that would probably be the best option.
26?
Yeah, 26 would work.
I don't think I can do the 26th. I think we might have to do the 25th, so.
Okay, all right.
Okay, at seven?
Seven.
Okay, great. Will this show?
Yeah. I can see if Carolyn wants to come. I can definitely, I have a couple thoughts on that that I can probably voice ahead of time and put that in front of the board, because I definitely have a couple points that I want to put forward on start time, so I'll put that in.
You can do that, right? If, you know, and then we'll just, we'll have forward that.
Okay.
If Carolyn can substitute for you, that would also agree, she agreed your thoughts in the morning.
Okay.
So.
High school?
High school? High school.
So could we have a motion to approve the Oyster River High School volunteer coaches? I think that's where they are, right?
Yes.
Kenny?
I look to approve the Oyster River High School coaches, and I guess there's a first week coach, Mark West.
Moved by Kenny, seconded by Denise. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor? Okay. We need to accept the resignation of Jamie Mulcahy. Could I have a motion to accept that resignation? Sarah?
I need a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Mulcahy.
Moved by Sarah, seconded by Maria. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor?
For the record, we want to thank her for the service to Oyster River and wood her well as she moves on to New England.
Motion to approve the policies, we have, let's see. Sorry.
Do you want to see them?
Yeah, okay. So I don't know if we want to approve these as a, as a group, whether people want to pull out individual ones? What's your thoughts?
How about I'll put it through for a block, if anyone wants to remove one, go ahead. But these are all policies for second read, which is adoption. Policy ADC, which is use of tobacco products. Policy BDB, which is... Policy BDB, which is Board Officer, Board Organization Meeting and Procedure, and we made the adjustment there for secretary. Policy BEC, which refers to non-public sessions. Policy GBAA, sexual harassment. And then EEA, which is the K-4 school drop-off protocol we discussed last meeting. Can I approve it?
Is there a second for this block approval? Second, Denise? Okay. So this, this been moved and seconded as a block, are there discussions? Denise?
I guess I'm still a little, oh, okay, and secretary's been crossed out. Okay, that's, that's what, yeah, okay, got it.
Okay. Sarah?
Just, I was looking at the GBAA, and wanted to make sure I was reading the policy correctly. The Board only becomes aware of a claim after it has been investigated and a finding has been reached. And at that point, we only become aware of it if the claim was found valid. Does that sound right to people?
Where are you, I'm sorry, so?
I'm just, just an overall understanding of the GBAA policy. As I read through it, I'm reading it to mean that the Board only becomes aware of a sexual harassment claim after it has been investigated. So we do not find out about the claim until it gets to, until it's been...
That's correct, so...
Resolved, essentially.
And when you would hear about the claim, I guess what I would say is if it had legs, we wouldn't bring every single thing to you guys that somebody says they're going to do. We bring to you what has actually been done. So, you know, if somebody says they're going to sue us on X, Y, and Z, then we don't bother you with it. But if a lawsuit proceeded, we would certainly inform you.
Are there other questions? So it's been moved and seconded, right? All those in favor of approving these policies as a block, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor, the policies are approved. Committee updates? Okay, Dr. Morse has talked about the negotiating committee, which is moving into action now. Hearing none? Okay. Public comment?
I'm Dean Rubine from LEED. I wanted to just quickly mention, I looked at the tobacco policy, and I, I guess I would have preferred to see something that just sort of blanketly banned all the paraphernalia associated with e-cigarettes and vaporizers, and not really try to tie that to tobacco. I don't really want to get into the business of analyzing what the kids have, if they have this stuff. I just wouldn't want to see it in school. That's all I got. Thanks.
Okay, closing actions. Our next meeting will be on the 18th. We've scheduled a workshop on the 25th, and then the meeting after that would be on the 6th, June, June 1st. So there's no non-public session today. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, yes.
Maria?
I move, we adjourn.
Moved by Maria, seconded by Dan. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in favor, the rep in favor, we're adjourned.